Daytona Beach. And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the January 19th, 2022, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are happy, we're delighted to have each of you with us tonight. And at this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature and date. The form must be placed in the com- the form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comments and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please be clear into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You will be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment forum, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. Also, since completing the green forum, will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Warrantesses reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission or any committee or agency or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry. Here. We will now have the invocation led by Commissioner Traeger, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Reed.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessed day you have given us today. We appreciate all that you have done for us and we ask for your continued blessings in the future. Give us the wisdom and the patience and the knowledge to do the best we can for our city and its residents and our guests. Thank you for the wonderful state of the city message that we got just a little while ago. We are moving forward and that is because of you. Please bless our staff, our police, our firemen, and the guests, and the residents, and those who are far away helping us and taking care of us. Give us the wisdom to do the best we can. Let us be congenial with each other and help us to get through this terrible time that we're having with this COVID. We thank you. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the December 15th, 2021, regular city commission meeting.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Henry. Do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. That motion carries 7-0. Now move on to our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our esteemed city manager will address them.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, there are no changes for tonight's meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We'll take the motion from Commissioner Reed and the second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. And we'll now move on to item six, which are presentations. Item 6A is a presentation recognition of Antonio Rashad Wilson Jr.
That's right. I emailed him. Yeah. I think. I emailed him.
And you'll come on up to the front.
eighth grade, he noticed a friend choking. AJ and another friend performed the Heimlich remover, thus saving that child's life. And today, we want to honor him and award him with this certificate that says, Life-saving Award. This certificate is awarded to Antonio Rashad Wilson Jr. in recognition of your heroic and life-saving actions on November 9th, 2020, by performing the Heimlich remover, Heimlich maneuver, to save a life. And it is signed by Derrick L. Henry, Mayor Derrick Henry, and our city manager Derrick Pietra. And we are so proud of Antonio because that's a once-in-a-lifetime deal. But his mom said that she always knew that it was important for him to understand CPR and the Heimlich, Heimlich, I just can't say that, I'm sorry. Heimlich maneuver. And so she was instrumental in making sure that he knew how to do that. And so we want to thank mom, because mom, you're part of this. And we also want to thank AJ for doing a fantastic job. He is a student at, I know, I know, Father Lopez High School. And he plays football, and he's a really, 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 really good football player. So let's give AJ a hand. Oh, and also AJ is the grandmother of.
Rose Askew.
Rose Askew. Yes, Rose Askew.
Grandson.
I'm all over the place. I can't. Turn around, scoot down.
Right here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Mom, want a picture? You want a picture, Daniel?
Come on, mom.
What senator?
Jennifer, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Yay. Okay, we're going to move on to item 6B, which is the presentation by Dream Green, Dream Green Volusia.
While they're coming, I would say that I'd be remiss if I didn't say I have the pleasure of being very proud of you and your mother as an administrator when she was a student. And now to see her as a fantastic participant on the, or member of the Mayor McLeod-Bethune Statuary Committee, and she's done a magnificent job of helping us with that process. And she does a great job in her work and all things that she's doing, setting a great example for you. And we're just excited about all that you are going to become. And appreciative of your grandmother for all that she's done for both of you, but this is a sign of, you know, we're in a state of the city, and you all are Daytona Beach. You represent the best of us, and we're proud of you. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Suzanne Schreiber, and I am the founder of Dream Green Volusia. I'm here to do a storm drain presentation tonight that is for the city of Daytona Beach. Derek, Mr. Mayor Henry invited me, and this is not our first time here. We are an environmental organization that does work county-wide, and we have had a lot of successes in the county, everything from land conservation to water projects. If you're not aware, the lagoon has unfortunately had a very large manatee die-off. There were over 1,000 manatees that died last year, and unfortunately, that is still happening even now, today. So storm drains and cleaning up the river is a very widespread issue right now. And the lagoon, which is actually the Halifax River, the Halifax River runs all the way, the lagoon designation runs all the way to the Volusia County border going north. So if you're not aware of that, it does not just run to New Smyrna Beach anymore. It is actually considered the lagoon all the way to the border of Volusia County. So the situation with storm drains is what goes down the storm drain goes directly to the river, usually. They can also go to retention ponds or canals, but eventually, a lot of times, what goes in a storm drain ends up in the river. So for this presentation tonight, it is specifically to do with storm drains. Adopt a Drain is a program that is run by volunteers, and it is utilized to keep the drains debris-free. And by debris, I mean tree debris, lawn debris, anything that can carry chemicals such as fertilizer runoff and pesticides down the drain, also trash. You don't want those things ending up in the river. Hence, you wouldn't want to eat fish that might have plastic or chemicals or, you know, something like that in it. Also, dog feces. I'm going to assume and hope that you have dog pickup bags in your parks, because that would be very helpful in that situation. But Adopt a Drain is a nationwide program, and while we really don't have it so much in the state of Florida, it is being utilized in other states, and it's very effective with partnership between the city and volunteers to keep the drains clean. So how would that work? A volunteer would volunteer about twice a month for about 15 minutes. The good thing about the program is it can be customized to meet the city's needs. If the city has different needs than twice a month for 15 minutes, then you would just customize it as you see fit. But as far as the basic program, it's twice a month for about 15 minutes. The Adopt a Storm Drain logo is right there on that slide, as you see, and that's what's being used across other states and other cities and counties. So a volunteer would need your basic items. They would need a rake, trash grabber, plastic bags. The city could provide something like gloves and trash bags. Being that it's a partnership, everyone benefits from the storm drains being picked up, and it would make sense if you provided some of those items. They don't have to be provided, but if you want volunteers to do a good job, that would be recommended. Then we have storm drain murals, okay? A storm drain mural would be something you would put in a very high-traffic, high-foot traffic area, such as in your downtown area, because you want to educate the public that what goes down the storm drains goes to the river. So you want only rain going down the storm drains. We're currently working with two artists to achieve these murals. Here are some examples of murals. This program is popular in South Florida. They actually have utilized murals down there to label their drains, and it is being used in other states as well. I'll give you a second to focus there. You can see that there's a variety of nice artwork, and the whole goal here is to stop items from going down the drain and to educate the public, and it's aesthetically pleasing. The next slide shows you some more storm drain artwork. The one on the top right, they took it up the lamppost. You see the concrete there is painted. When I said we're working with two artists, we contracted an artist that's local with Save the Arts Movement to paint our trash can, which you can see over here, it's very nice artwork. That gives you an idea of something that could be done. You want it to be something, obviously aesthetically pleasing, but it would be nice if it had some catchy words on it, something along the lines of the lagoon starts here, because it really So before I move on, not all drains can be painted. You wouldn't want to paint brick pavers, for example, or you wouldn't want to paint necessarily something that is a very small storm drain. A storm drain cost is about, for an artist with this caliber, starts at $500. And I have an artist ready to go, as I said. And then we also have an artist in New Smyrna Beach, but you're welcome, obviously, if you decide to do this to obtain your own artist. In addition to storm drain murals, you would want to label your drains. I'm aware of the city using the emblems, which is great, but tonight, we're going to present you with two stencils. We have a large and a small, and the way this works, these say Dump No Waste, Drains to River. You would put the stencil down flat, you would paint over it with white paint. It would be white paint used for parking lot lines or the line of road, that type of paint. And you would simply label the storm drains, and it would look like the photo on the left that says Dump No Waste, Drains to River. Drains are various sizes. They are not-for-profit. We were able to purchase enough storm drain labels for every city, so we're actually providing you with two of these, a large and a small, this evening. So hopefully, you use these in high-traffic areas as well, because obviously, at $500 a mural, you wouldn't want to paint murals at every high-traffic storm drain. But the idea here is to do possibly both and make something that is educational and also pleasing to the eye. So what we're asking tonight is to work with utilities and incorporate the programs that we just went over. It's my understanding that you have many roads that are being redone and possibly sidewalks. So the reason we have these locations on these roads on this slide is because those are the ones that I believe that you are redoing. If that's not accurate, someone's going to have to tell me. But I originally would like to do, start with two. If Mayor Henry invited me here, and if the discussion goes somewhere else, that's perfectly great, too. I have not, the only one that I have been down was Seabreeze Boulevard, and Seabreeze Boulevard had brick pavers. And to be honest, you don't want to paint brick pavers, and we discussed that. So if there's other storm drains, you would definitely want to choose the best of the best, the largest, the most visible, higher-foot-traffic, best area. So if anyone has any questions, I can answer them, but I appreciate you letting me speak tonight, and thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay.
Although Seabreeze has the brick pavers, couldn't we put that on the street in front of the drains?
Yes.
Okay.
Providing your utilities would cooperate with that, yes.
Okay.
Could Public Works, please tell us if we already have an Adopt a Drain program? I believe we do have that already going, but I'm unsure. I believe it came up about a year ago with Ms. Ponnet. I don't know if there's somebody here.
I remember hearing something like that, but I don't think we've really delved into it like we should have.
I think we have something, I think that if Ms. Ponnet's is in the back, or Mr. Waller, but she's.
Yes, we have started the Adopt a Drain program. I don't believe we've had a whole lot of people signing up for it, but Susan's put out some information about it, and it is something that we're working towards, so.
Okay, so, well, there's another direction or step. So Adopt a Drain is the part that basically says to the resident that we want you to come out. And sometimes, it takes us, the elected people and the staff, to be visible and proactive to make it happen. You know, I do remember us approving this. I forgot, one of the commissioners brought it up or something. Yeah, okay, yeah, you brought it up. So it's in play, but I would like to see it, and I knew that that was in play, but I want to see us have a comprehensive program that works. Right now, we have, to my knowledge, I didn't know if anyone had signed up for that.
Now with the Sierra Club, because that's the person or the group who actually started it, and they have a team of volunteers, did we ever move forward with working with them?
I believe that Betty had a conversation with the Sierra Group, but I don't know exactly where that went.
Okay. Might be something to follow up on, because that's about 1,500 people, and I thought that was a conversation between the city staff and that. Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
We're happy to do some public outreach ourselves, if that would help. We're actually perfectly happy to go door-to-door and knock on doors to introduce the program. That would be up to you. And so our recommendation with Adopt a Drain was to start small and choose an area where you might have a problem. Utilities would know where that would be, and start just in that area and educate the public as to the program, so.
That's the type of approach that I want to take, and I'm willing to even knock on a few doors with you myself.
That would be great.
That's the way that you make a project, because the reality is, it's supposed to be you take care of the drain in your, on your street, in your neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yes.
And to me, you can't wait for some organization, you got to get out, and we have to get the community engaged in this.
Correct.
Part of it is, obviously, Drew, is Drew here? Can we use COVID funds, like if a commissioner has their COVID funds? Can we use COVID funds to paint some of the drains?
We will research that information. Currently, the new final rule just came out last week, which further broadens the use of the COVID funds, so I think we're going to be able to do a lot more of many of the items that you guys have requested with your zone-specific funds, but we'll check into that for you.
And can you send me those, the final? I don't remember seeing.
436-page one.
Yep, I know how to, I got a place that'll break it down, but send me that.
Got you.
The whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I interject? I'm willing to walk as well. Need to walk, and I'm in the mayor's fitness challenge.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Reed.
But I want to see some of these murals, too. I want to take it to the next level. We may have already established something, but apparently, we need a partnership with all parties involved to take this to the next level. I would love to see this. I've asked about electronic boxes and stuff being with the murals. Just call me the art commissioner, but I want to take this to the next level.
And a part of the reason I asked him if we could use the COVID funds is that zone-specific funding, if any of you want to use that to say that you want to do these, then that's a way to say that we have a defined resource to pay for these in place, okay? And I'm, you know, I'm saying that, you know, that's something that, so, what would be the next step? So we got stencils, we got the possibility of knocking on doors.
Mm-hmm. We need utilities to just determine an area that we would go knock on doors, that they feel like that would benefit from starting. Yeah. And as far as the murals, you just need to let me know where, and, like, the roads, and we would just walk along and figure out which murals would be, which storm drains would be the best to paint a mural on. Yep, and that would get it going. If you're happy with this artwork, this artist is aware that I'm here presenting tonight, and she's been waiting for this. She painted that for us last August. It's been a while. And if you want something different, then you're welcome to use your own artist, or I can possibly do another artist from New Smyrna Beach.
But if they did, it would be that same drawing?
Probably not. Artists usually don't do the same thing twice, but, but what I, so what I would do is, the way that I've, I've been handling this, is to get them to submit artwork that would be approved by whoever you designate, whether it's the commission or someone else.
No, that's going to be the staff.
Right, okay, then staff.
Go ahead.
We'll get your information and make contact with you. So just providing, we'll have a.
We will get your information, have appropriate staff member that we're going to select to get with you on, and then we'll coordinate, having that opportunity for people to walk and see what's available.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And you can go ahead and have the staff to identify a few of the, as soon as he determines whether we can use the COVID funds. Because I don't know if any of you are interested in using your COVID funds for that, but I would, I could find one for that, you know?
If you're open to allow the artists to use their own creativity, that's usually what I do. I did suggest recently, one drain somewhere else for manatees, for example, because of the situation, but there are a lot of possibilities here, as, as you can see, and the, yeah.
All right, so he'll have staff to coordinate with you.
Okay.
And I would like to see us execute the whole plan if we can. I would be supportive of it. Now, I understand we have the Adopt a Drain. We'll let staff give us a report on where that is as it stands, but I want to, you know, we got to get some of the drains adopted, so.
I'm perfectly happy if Sierra Club does this as well, as long as it's done. We, I'm just volunteering that we would gladly go door-to-door and meet you to go door-to-door.
And if you do that, I'll.
Yes, absolutely.
We'll have Betty and David Waller get together on this item. Betty's leading it, but David and Shannon will be able to tell us where our drains are. But once Drew finds out if we're able to use those funds, we'll work, because Betty was working with the Sierra Club, and you ought to move this forward.
Sure. I have a card, and I will be happy to leave it for you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a moment to talk about some?
Yes, please do.
Well, we have, we have two more celebrities in our city besides Antonio Wilson Jr. At last Wednesday, at the Volusia County League of Cities, they had a swearing-in ceremony for a new president, Madam President, our Commissioner Paula Reed. Congratulations, Paula. And our Police Chief, Chikari Young, was given the award of the President's Award for 2021. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number seven, citizens' comments, this is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda, and unless John fills out a slip, I don't have anyone that's speaking on the consent agenda.
Wow. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Now, a motion from Commissioner Henry, and we'll take a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
We're going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Derby Plaza Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Chapter 163.3187 of Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 4.9 plus or minus acres of property generally located east of Derbyshire Road, south of 9th Street, and north of A Street from Level 1 residential to low-intensity commercial, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Henry and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments?
And I have no speakers for this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Now move on to item 9B, the Development and Administrative Services Timber Creek Village Multi-Family Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution, public hearing. A resolution approving the Timber Creek Village Multi-Family Proportionate Fair, Proportionate Share Master-Parent Tractor.
Do we have any questions or comments?
And I have no speakers for this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Now move on to item 9B, the Development Administrative Services Timber Creek Village Multi-Family Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution, public hearing. A resolution approving the Timber Creek Village Multi-Family Proportionate Fair, Proportionate Share Master Parent Tractor Agreement between the City Booze Development Group, Inc., and the County of Volusia, providing for the developer to pay proportionate fair share contribution to Volusia County in relation to the Timber Creek Village Multi-Family Project, generally located on the northeast quadrant of the intersection of LPJ Boulevard and Tournament Drive, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
When they consider the roadways, do they consider just the roadways in the city, or do they consider the states and the county roads also?
Good evening, Jessica Gao, Cobb Coal Law Firm, 149 South Ridgewood Avenue. The network that they study includes all roadways within a certain radius, and so it would include the impact on all the roadways. But when we look at what can be applied towards the prop share, you look at city and county roadway facilities that we can improve.
But the neighborhood maybe out a little bit from the project itself that would be impacted by the traffic is also considered?
Yes. So when they do the significance analysis for the proportionate share through the Traffic Impact Analysis Study, they go a certain radius out depending on the number of trips and how wide that impact will go.
Because, and that is also paid for with the concurrency fund?
Yeah, we cannot direct under the agreement that applicant can't decide what improvements are made. We leave that all in the county's hands, so they can target those funds to what their priority is.
Thank you.
All right, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
We'll now move on to item 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is the City Manager's Office Redevelopment Division, First Amendment to the Beaches ISB Plan Development, Redevelopment, Rezoning. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to Beaches ISB Plan District Agreement to allow electronic message center signs on property located at 301 East International Speedway Boulevard, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. Any questions or comments?
Whether it's residents fighting your fight, is it, have they been consulted if there's any?
Have they been consulted if there's any, anything that would bother them or something? And if there is, is there a way that this sign can either be amended or stopped? Or I don't know how much it would impact them.
There is a notice requirement and a neighborhood meeting requirement, but Rob will let you speak to anything in particular.
Mayor, Commissioners Rob Merrill, 149 South Ridgewood, Cobb Coal. We had a neighborhood meeting, and we had some questions, and everybody seemed satisfied. It's a really nice sign that they're, we're going to build. And Chuck Duvie's here. Hope you guys have seen the progress that he's made over there. Building looks fantastic. I think the sign is a beautiful sign. I actually have a video sort of that I can show you if you wanted to do it now. I was planning to do it on second reading, since normally we don't say much on first reading, Ruth, but it's your pleasure.
I look forward to seeing it on the second.
Sounds good. Okay, thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
The public hearing is set for February 2nd. Moving on to item 10B, it's the Development Administrative Services Leisure Services Department Bike Week 2022, Private Property Master Plan Resolution. A resolution approving the Bike Week 2022 Master Plan for outside activities on private property, authorizing outside activities during Bike Week 2022 on private property located on Main Street, Peninsula Drive, Halifax Avenue, Fairview Avenue, Beach Street, Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard, Martin Luther King Boulevard, Fulton Street, Weaver Street, McLeod Avenue, Walnut Street, and Oak Street, pursuant to Land Development Code Section 5.4.C.11 and the Bike Week Master Plan Guidelines, subject to conditions, providing for submission and city commission review of applications to participate in Bike Week 2022 Master Plan for properties located on Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune Boulevard from Seagrave Street to Ridgewood Avenue, and providing an effective date. Second.
Let me point out, if I may, there is a revised resolution that's been passed around the dais. It revises fees from the earlier draft and some other minor changes. I believe Mr. Morris is here to go through that. If not, I'll be glad to walk. All right, let me go over the fees, just so that everybody's aware of that.
Attorney Jack, although you will go through the presentation, Mr. Morris is on the Zoom. If there are any technical questions, as well as Ms. Askew is here, as well as Mr. Morozak. So all three senior members of the Planning Department are here if there are questions.
Yes, and I would defer to them for a historical basis and the reasoning for the actual fees. We just print them as we're told. So here's the provision with regard to the Bike Week fees, which is provided in the ordinance. It says that in addition to the applicable business taxes imposed under Chapter 90 of the code, and by the way, the business taxes for the vendors are, with regard to Bike Week, at $200 per week. They'll also have to pay, the owner, that is, applications fees required by the master plan. As a side, that is $300 plus 12 cents per square foot of vendor area. And in addition, the following fees, an administrative fee, properties located east of Ridgewood Avenue, it's $300 per vendor. Properties located west of Ridgewood Avenue, which is essentially the SAMA organization, that is $50 per vendor. In addition, there's a sanitation fee, which is $50 per vendor, a regulation fee, which is based on code enforcement expenses of $30 per vendor, and a sign permit fee, which is $20 per temporary sign. Any questions with regard to fees that I would defer to staff on?
Are these the same fees that the vendors were paying at the last event? Let's say for the SAMA festival, are they doing the same fees that they've always had? These are the same fees they've had?
I'd have to rely on Rose or Mr. Morris to.
Are you asking in regards to SAMA?
Yeah.
Yes, they're the same. We're going to have a discussion after Bike Week to look at that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There was one other change, which has been proposed in here, and that has to do with the area for which Bike Week entitlements are allowed. There was a gap which staff wants to fill in to allow for Bike Week participation. That gap is along MMB Boulevard between Seagrave and, let's see, the Cross Street.
US-1.
I'm sorry, just.
US-1.
And US-1. All right, thank you. So we are, this resolution would allow properties along that area to also participate in Bike Week. Was there anything else, Mr. Morris, that you wanted to highlight?
No, you've covered it. No, you've covered it.
Very good.
And Mr. Morris, that gap would fall under what?
It would be treated the same, Commissioner, as, I'm sorry, I'm trying to hear and be seen. It would be treated the same as the rest of MMB, that you'd have the ability to have Bike Week events from US-1 down to MLK. And SAMA will still be there, and other people can also participate.
I want to add as well, in order to allow us to fill in that gap, we would extend applications for a 10-day period, and you would vote on those specific applications at your next meeting.
So my question is, I'm sorry, does that gap fall into SAMA, or does it fall into the other Bike Week part?
No, ma'am, it's private property, and SAMA has a limited area where they're supposed to do business on the public sidewalks. So SAMA's plan has been prepared. We've spoken, Ms. Himes and Mr. Pride, in respect to that. So this would be an expansion of the area qualified. It would allow individual businesses and property owners in that vicinity to participate in the same fashion as SAMA has participated in the area that has historically been seen as SAMA area.
And then one final change related to extending the application time to fill in that gap. There was a property, Froggy's, at 800 Main Street, which was found to be not in compliance. Staff has also proposed that we allow them until your next meeting to come into compliance, so that they may participate.
Have we notified, I'm assuming we've notified the businesses that they're now eligible to participate in that particular area, since it's in that zone?
Notice will need to go out of some sort, yes.
Not till we vote tonight.
That's a short time.
I'm sorry, Dennis Rosick, Planning Director, we were just talking to Captain Lee. He was saying that Froggy's is now actually in compliance with those requirements, so they've already met that requirement.
Just assuming that status is the same, we'll include that at the next meeting.
Are the setup arrangements the same for this event as they have been in the past?
Yes, sir.
They're not being?
They are.
Okay.
They are.
Thank you.
I do have a speaker, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranville Avenue. I just asked Rose if this is the same amount, if anything has been raised, and she said no. I do recall about 17 years ago, Darlene Jordan went to Sturgis and found out that we were way under valued for what we were offering. So I'm asking that, we've often had problems, I think the last time I remember you changing anything and didn't, was the, it's in Cookman College at the stadium. We had not raised their rent for like 20 years. We wanted to raise it, but it was too much. So we reached some kind of an agreement. So I'm asking that make sure that we don't delay raising the price to, we get to the point where we have to raise it too much. So I'd rather raise it a little bit each year than get it at a time when it's way too high. But I don't like the idea of not getting our fair share. We can do a lot with this money. Secondly, at some point, again, maybe 15, 20 years ago, we stopped the Main Street Bike Week from River to Ocean. That section from Halifax to the river, we took out of the master plan. I would like to put it back. I think it's appropriate that the entire street benefit. Secondly, we also started this program and Bike Week on Main Street with the idea that they would use those funds to keep their properties up. There are several properties with graffiti, poor condition, weeds, all that kind of stuff. I'm asking that we especially go down looking for anything that would keep the street tawdry or ugly throughout the year. If they're not willing to keep the property up, then we don't give them the benefit of getting this extra money. So to me, if we're going to give you the opportunity to make $100,000, $1 million, or whatever, that you could put some of that money into maintaining your property. I came before you before, remember the laundromat and several of the others that were skating on the edge? I'm asking you again to make sure that with these funds, that Main Street, because we really want to improve it, that they use this to keep their properties as neat and as possible. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, in regard to the rates on the MMB side, the rates are being maintained the same because really business there has suffered and declined. The effort is to maintain rates where people hopefully will do more business there, and it becomes a stronger market than whether the rates charged continue to be appropriate to be considered by the commission. But for now, the staff position is, believe the rates as they are, take a look at the health of the event over the next couple of years and see what's justified in that instance.
Good evening, Rose Askew, Planning Coordinator. I wanted to clarify what Mr. Nicholson said. The question he posed to me was, were these fees that we're talking about tonight different from fees that we've charged in the past? And my answer was, no, they are the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? I wasn't here. Do we have a motion and a second?
We do have a motion and a second.
We can as quickly as possible notify those merchants on the new area that they can start making plans to be involved. It's kind of short notice. People plan for this for six months sometimes. So just to make sure that they're aware of it as quickly as possible.
And for the record, Commissioner Traeger has submitted Form 8B, the Memorandum of Voting Conflict for County, Municipal, or Other Local Public Officials. And her conflict is she's a partial owner of a property that's in the private plan.
Her conflict, by the way, I believe is in that gap area, so it won't be till the next meeting that you would have the actual conflict. You can vote on this, but you'll need to recuse yourself under this form for next time.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, here, none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye. Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
That was the final agenda item on the agenda.
All right, we will move on to our commission comments. Commence tonight with Commissioner Reed.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that topic of MMB, you know, last week when we talked and we said that we wanted to keep the median strip there, and I thought about how aesthetically pleasing that would be. Is Andy here?
No, but Mr. Waller is here.
Mr. Waller, okay. I'd like to see if we could find some funds. And let's just take it from Beach Street to Lincoln. Let's just make it, if we can, if we're going to have this unified look from MMB to Beach Street, and the Statue of Mary was already here, it just hasn't been unveiled, the bronze statue coming down her street. Mr. Waller, let's see if we can find some funds and take that from Beach to Lincoln.
Are you talking an entire streetscape or a road resurfacing? Yes, ma'am. Well, I think we can certainly resurface the roadway from Ridgewood up to Lincoln and through the university there, and the spot that was missed a few years ago. I wouldn't recommend changing the limits of the current project, because we have applied for state funds for that, federal funds, and changing the limits would complicate that. But we have funds within our resurfacing program that's already been approved by the commission. That is, as that project comes to maturity, we can include that section for paving.
All right, thank you. Let's do that.
All right, well, you all agree with that? I like it. Let's get it done. No opposition?
Does that include side, because I mean, when I think about the sides, right? I mean, it's got a special six-foot blah blah blah. Does that include sidewalks, too, or just the street? Curious.
Well, most of the, most of the section of the roadway between Ridgewood and Lincoln is already in the streetscape. It is Second Avenue between MLK and Ridgewood. So that's, those sidewalks would remain in place. We resurfaced that section. We'll take a closer look at the section between MLK and Lincoln. That section of roadway through the college has got very narrow sidewalks and has some special needs due to all the crossings. And we've had some conversations in the past with the university there. And during the time of, the time of, we're doing the design work for Beach Street and for the other section of MMB east of Ridgewood, we'll look at that section in particular and see what needs to happen there to make it work as well as possible with the university. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The MLK celebration, I really liked us taking it to the park. You know, it, you march, and then we go and we have church. But it was just nice to see the community and the diversity of our community to come out to the park on Monday after the walk. There were vendors, and there were families, and the Greeks were there, and things were given away free. I mean, the group I was with, MCDC, we gave out soap powder and bleach to folks. It was just nice. I mean, we used the stage of Daisy Stockin Park to have a program. The mayor was there. He gave out the MLK scholarships. It was just nice to have a community group, and it was nice to see you there, Commissioner Strickland. And I think it was really nice. I've already advocated for this with the MLK committee, that I think this is what they should perhaps consider in the future, because it brought all peoples out. It wasn't just something where we marched and went to church. I can go to church anytime. My church is, you know. But I just thought it was nice. I mean, if they want to do the festival thing, or the, they probably don't even have to do the dinner thing anymore, because the way the people came out for this, they can get funds for scholarships just from having hosted this. And speaking of Dr. King, the banners are up again this year on MLK. You know, as you're driving down MLK, take an opportunity to see some of his notable quotes that he shared with us. So those are up in conjunction with the city and MCDC. And then, you guys, just look around these chambers. Do you see a difference? Doesn't it look good? And this was all done in-house, and they're not quite through. But look at the artwork and the skill that was used to make our little area up here better, and they painted. and the skill that was used to make our little area up here better and they painted and brightened things up. I just want to commend staff, and I'm sure you might be going to do something, Mr. Mayor, but I want them to know that the commission recognizes the work that they've done and how good it looks and the skill that our staff has. We didn't have to go out and outsource these skills. Even our little name things came in. I saw these earlier today. So I think they did a great job and I want them to know that we recognize that. I guess that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Reed. We have a very, very, very talented staff, and I couldn't be more pleased. It's so professional and it looks so bright, and I like the look very much. I was speaking with City Attorney Bob Jagger and we were talking about that roadway, whatever, to the river, and he thought he might have come up with maybe a solution that he would look more into.
I'd like to speak to that during my comments at the end, if I may.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Strickland?
Okay. Could you send your time and give us just a quick update on where we are with looking at the, going forward with non-disclosure or a time period for disclosing information that is upheld under the non-disclosure contract?
Yes, I'll be glad to. At the last meeting, I believe, we, or maybe the week, the meeting before that, I'm not sure, but we had discussed the possibility of creating a policy where, when the city did receive a confidentiality request or demand, as they're entitled to do under state law, which was done in the Amazon case, that the commission would have a policy of requiring at least two weeks of public notice before a vote. And so we are in the process of drafting that. We'll need to run it by, of course, the manager and city staff for their approval. So that is something I anticipate bringing back to you with their approval at an upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Do we have an update on the Halifax River property that was vacated?
So again, that's something I'd like to speak to at the end during my comments. The same that Commissioner Traeger had referenced.
Commissioner Strickland, since you're bringing up the disclosure, we had a meeting today and I also would like to discuss the Hillwood PD meeting they had on August 16th that I feel that the residents of Pelican Bay and a lot of residents in that area were not aware of the Pelican Bay extension because every single map, every single document says Bellevue and Williamson. And we had a discussion about this, so there was no, no communication, it seemed like. And as for me, looking at it as well, I did not even aware that they were actually voting, the county was, on November 2nd for the, for the Pelican Bay extension. So I know this is not going to help us now, but in the future, I would like to have something that we discussed that we could do if something like this would ever happen again.
So briefly, just to follow up on that, what happened in this case with Amazon is that they obtained driveway access, essentially a right of use, to cross through the airport, the county airport property to get to State Route 400 Bevel. And that was done at the county level. It was a public meeting, you know, so that there was some notice with regard to that. But it was not particularly coordinated through the city, not that that would be a legal requirement. But what essentially happened is that was, that happened separately from our consideration of, of the incentive agreement. So I think there was some recognition by Commissioner Cantu through her constituents that there was, one hand was not knowing what the other hand was doing. So the suggestion here from Commissioner Cantu is to revise our requirements for PD applications so that they have to identify access points. And that's something I'll be glad to look into at the commission's direction. Right now, there is no specific requirement that a PD identify driveways, for instance. And frankly, they may not know where all the driveways are, but we could add a requirement that requires them to show at least intended access to public rights ways. So that would provide greater notice to those that receive notice for the neighborhood meetings and.
Aye. My residents are not, we, we like the project, Amazon, almost all my residents over here. The problem we have is we were kept in the dark about the extension of Pelican Bay in front of our, our East Gate. So all this 600 semis are coming out in front of our neighborhood and plus 3,000 vehicles, plus the master county plan, which is all industrial, which is going to be even more vehicles. And I felt like, we felt like we were kept in the dark when this went on. And during the commission meeting for the incentive agreement, yes, we passed incentive agreement, and I sat there right up here and asked, I said, no trucks coming in. But I wasn't aware, November 2nd, a month prior, the county passed for trucks to come out. So there has to be some kind of communication between the city, the county, and so we know what's going on.
So one way to facilitate that is to require in the PD that there be some disclosure. So again, if you all will direct me, I'll be glad to draft something up for your consideration.
Yeah, let me add to that. It's really in the plan development. And plan development has been a great asset to our growth and evolution as a city. But almost weekly, Commissioner Traeger is aggravated by the uncertainty of what emerges from plan development projects and the way that they're done. So I think, I don't think you'll have any opposition, but I'll ask that in just a moment. But I think we do need to do something more to see how we can protect our residents because that's a, that's up to us. And they count on us to make certain that this doesn't happen. And we were not in a position of power, really, to do anything about this. And so we need to put ourselves as a, as a city in position of power to be able to control what transpires in our city. So I'm in favor of you finding whatever means, because I don't want things outside of our purview, you know? We have enough of an assault from Tallahassee on Home Rule. It's under complete attack. So they're, year after year after year, they're squeezing us for more and more and more, and we have less and less authority. So whatever we can hold on to, we need to. Even the non-disclosure is something that comes from Tallahassee. It doesn't come from us. It gives, the authority comes from them. And ultimately, they, if they notice that municipalities are doing what we're doing, they'll say, well, cities don't have, won't have a right. The staff will just have a right. They'll squeeze us again. So for as long as we can protect our residents, we need to do whatever we can. And I'm thinking even more, but I'll have to.
Can I?
Sit down with the staff to think about what else I think might be able to be done. But anything you can think of, I'm in favor of.
And I do, I do, I did talk to today, I did have a meeting in Hillwood. He did fly in today, and NASCAR with Mr. Jagger, Feacher, Dennis. They are trying to work with us, and I think we might have some solutions, which I'd have to run by the HOA master tomorrow before we actually have a meeting, probably next month, we're going to have a meeting, and actually, he'll be flying in for that meeting. But I do think we do have some solutions that we've come up with that are going to make the residents happy, but we can't have this happen again.
No, makes us look like, you know, we're not defending them, and we don't ever want to look like that. Commissioner, may?
So something similar is also happening on Beachside, but it's for the different agencies. So we have FDOT, which we're always happy to have their help and assistance in fixing our roads and taking care of the neighborhoods and doing upgrades. We appreciate it. But sometimes their notification process is a bit lacking, and I'm wondering if they can improve that process to the surrounding neighborhoods. Just this week, I actually went out there at 10:30 at night to witness it, to see what was going on. I recognize that it's not a city issue, but if we could ask FDOT, especially since we might be doing some work on Mason, the effects that that has with coming home, going to work, taking your kids, the bus routes, et cetera, et cetera, so people can plan accordingly because it's been a real challenge for the residents on Oak Ridge and some of the businesses on the Oak Ridge Boulevard area. And we're doing some work there right now. They're close to completion, but it was, it's been hard for the residents there at night. Thank you. They've been doing night work, which maybe speeds it up, but it's been really hard on working people in that area. Thank you.
Commissioner?
I was not finished. I felt like I got a little hijacked there.
Well, you don't ever get hijacked, but you got to let the dialogue go and we'll always come back to you. I'll never stop.
Eventually.
Yeah.
You're probably going to bring this up later. Several of us talked about it last meeting about a list of projects that we have in the pipeline and where we stand on that and when we'll be able to get that as far as LPGA and citywide, for that matter, development projects, so we can get a better idea of where we are and where we need to go and what we need to do as far as infrastructure and water in the future and that sort of thing.
Well, if you have something specific additional, I think staff knows what we want for March 1st, but if you have something else you're requesting of them, I think you should kind of specify and tell them. I think they know what we want on LPGA. I think that I want LPGA separate from everything else, and that's something we're going to hone in on and look at how we can work.
Can we just add how much development we have coming citywide outside of LPGA to that?
You mean like adding things like the projects on Beach Side and the one down on Beach Street and all those developments?
Right, right. Most of those will be.
Okay, I don't want to add a part of that, but yes, he will add that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So one of my key topics was the concept of how do we keep residents informed about what's coming up? And I recognize we have the concept of, you go to the website and get the information there, but sometimes things sneak up on you. And then before you know it, you're in the middle of construction and you don't know what to do about it. So I like the idea of having a two-week, one-week notice, people can plan accordingly. If we can work with FDOT or whomever when they're doing big projects to help everybody, I think that'll be really good for all of us. So with the MLK, last month, and I never mentioned it, forgot to mention it, sometimes I do things and I'm so busy doing them, I'm like, ah, I'm sure everybody knows, but here it goes. So Museum of Arts and Science has been putting on a documentary that I'm sponsoring, and it's raw footage of the life of MLK, and you'll see some, some actors in there who you did not know were part of the civil rights movement, and you see a very integrated experience. And you hear about stories that you don't hear about, and you hear about the violence that change brings about. So this is being put on by the Museum of Arts and Science, and it's happened already. It happened on the first Tuesday in January, first Tuesday in February, and first Tuesday in March. And I warn you, it's a three-hour intense documentary. We take an intermission in between, but it's a three-hour documentary, but a fantastic experience. I'm really looking forward also to the Small Footprint Home presentation we're having on the second, so thank you very much for having that on the agenda. And that's about it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cantu?
Said my piece.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Henry?
Just three small things. I know that we were told that there were additional things that we would be able to do with the COVID funding, but when exactly will we know or when the funds that we've requested be given out? Because I requested quite a few things for some schools, quite a few months, you know, a couple months back, and so I'm just wondering when those.
Fire chief, thank you for the question regarding the COVID funds. So I understand for the timeline, as far as the additional seven and a half million dollars, we should expect that between May and June of this year?
No, not, no, no, no. She's not asking about that.
Oh, the current, for the programming, the 2021 programming plan. Some of the obstacles have been the rule restrictions requiring subrecipient grant agreements and several other documentation issues. As I mentioned earlier today, now that the final rule is out, they've further broadened what the allowable uses are and also allowable revenue, revenue loss metrics, that we could assume a $10 million loss, plant that into general fund, once in general fund, then we have a lot broader use of how we dole out that money for the various projects because we have submissions, several submissions from yourself and almost everyone up here on the dais that we have failed to move forward with expeditiously. But we have a meeting set up this Friday with Mr. Feacher and the CFO to help rectify and accelerate some of those programs.
Before, one of the things I do want to make sure we clarify because it goes to Commissioner Henry's request, our concern that we're going to have to deal with is making sure that the school board does not have to approve funding to the schools that she's requesting and that the schools cannot just receive those. So we have to determine if the principal is able to say, yes, they will collect the funds, or does it have to go through the school board with these to get those approved? That was one of the things we've discussed.
Yes, and the principal with Champion's Elementary has currently helped assisting us with that process of, does it need to go through the school board or are they authorized to sign on behalf of the school?
That's absurd. Absurd and ridiculous.
Well, I mean, they're the governing body.
No, no, it's absurd. I work in the school and it's.
Yes, I know.
Literacy programs for the elementary schools, so.
We should be able to help the schools in Daytona Beach. We want to help the schools in Daytona Beach. Please don't inhibit us from helping the schools in Daytona Beach if you're on the school board.
Oh, I was going to say, Drew Driscoll is not inhibiting any education of any school child. But yet, some of the rules do govern that if they are another subrecipient government entity, there's a procedure for how we have to get that approval.
Okay, we want to follow the procedure, but we just want to make sure that the board members understand that Daytona Beach has special needs.
We do.
The city of Daytona Beach is, does not have the agenda of being like maybe other municipalities in allowing, in not helping our schools. This is something that is, that we're helping on doing whatever we can to help our, help you help our schools. So, but anyway, I digress.
In addition to that, it's already January and testing comes around again, and what, February, March, they start testing and the funds haven't gotten there, and the goal is funding to improve those reading scores that were so low in those schools, like the two schools in my zone, low, low, Champion, low. So the bureaucracy and the red tape is, is, it doesn't help the children.
And I think that's one of the intents of the rewrite. The federal government received responses from jurisdictions throughout the country, including ours in Volusia County, about improving the process because there were those barriers that prevented a smooth action. Attorney Jagger and his staff have been working overtime, especially Kira, drafting all these various agreements that need to take place, and they're each 20 pages long, just to meet the federal mandate. But I think we have a solution coming up Friday that could hopefully accelerate and reduce the level of those agreements. Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Driscoll, that none of that outrage was directed towards you. I get serious about kids and schools.
I anticipate that on Friday, after our meeting, we will have some direction we can give back, and also the different entities, their chief administrative officers, I'll be able to communicate with them, and Drew will be able to communicate with his colleagues also, so we can try to move these forward at the next meeting.
Please do, please do.
My mic is off, sorry. The Derbyshire Park Master Plan, any more information on, on the plan and our plans to move forward with any of those projects? Or should I just come meet with you personally? I know I was sick this week, so I didn't get to see you.
Please do, so I can make sure that I have Mr. Willis and Ms. Goodman in with the plans and let you know the next steps. And also, we'll probably bring in Andy and David also, who are part of that discussion on the master plan, finalizing it.
Okay.
Or not finalizing, but moving forward with the other additional process.
Great, thank you. Also, can we allocate $500? Great. Thank you. Also, can we allocate $500 to Triple Fit? For the Triple Fit Delta Sigma Theta Small Business Financial Literacy Event? They are going to be helping residents start small businesses, help them with the process of starting small businesses. They are going to help them with their credit scores. They're going to help them do their incorporation papers, know what kind of insurance policies they'll need to start a small business. And I think that that is just such a wonderful event because people don't know how to start small businesses. They get into it and don't realize the process and their businesses fail. So this is gonna kind of help them not be fail-proof, but help them further along in, in being more successful. So it is the Triple Fit Delta Sigma Theta Small Business Financial Literacy Event during May Days. May Week. Sorry. Sorry, Miss Delta Sigma Theta. Also, the branding of the zones that we have been talking about. Has staff come up with any further ideas or will, we have a workshop on how we, we plan to start branding those zones? I'm really curious as to how Zone 5, because it's, no, branding.
Like signage and branding. Welcome to Derbyshire. Welcome to Midtown.
Welcome to Midtown. Welcome, yes.
Don't have a zone brand over there too much.
She got mine. She got her sign. I don't have mine. So branding of the zones. So is staff gonna be coming back to us with information on what that's going to look like with each zone? How we're going to move forward with that? Because I'm curious to see, because Zone 5 needs some branding. I know the other zones too, too, but I'm, I'm mother duck of Zone 5.
Yes, mother duck.
Our, our city clerk, I just leaned over and I said, was I here for that discussion? She says, I think you were here. Because I was just trying to figure out, sorry, the way, way finding signage, I think. If, if that's the case, we will bring something back, but to be honest, I have not, that has not been on my radar and I.
I'm pretty sure we talked about that, didn't we?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a part of the conversation as it relates to ARCA funds in general and the whole branding.
I got you.
Even when you think about like the Seabreeze art sign, all of that is a part of that. And then we parlayed that off into different neighborhoods.
I, I do recall that now.
Okay.
Drew, you can stay. Thank you.
I got yelled at last time.
She didn't make it for a meeting this week, so I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I would just want to know, because we haven't been getting COVID updates. And now that we have so many different strands of COVID and I've been reading where the numbers are increasing in the hospitals, in the county and statewide, and I just wonder if the COVID updates could start coming back and we could still get those as far as Daytona-specific and county-specific.
Within the state of Florida, they've changed how they do the data compared to previously when I was able to offer daily numbers. They do so on a weekly basis and they're a lot more broad in gen, in nature and in less specific. I know that the county is reviewing what the hospital numbers are and how that's actually working, so we could resume that. Yes. Uh, in the, I believe in the city manager's news update, we've had approximately 490 employees vaccinated. So that's greater than 50% of our employee base. We, approximately two weeks ago, we were definitely hard hit, but our numbers have been improving. I don't recall today's numbers, but we're in the 20 to 30 range right now of people that are out positive or close contact. Within the fire department, I could speak to, that I believe we have one person out right now. And I cannot speak, I don't have the data in front of me to intensely speak about the police department's numbers. But I could provide those to you.
Her signage and it's awesome. So I would surely love, she's already got some of her branding stuff. So hopefully it'll be coming around to some of the other zones. Last thing is looking at the crime report in the newsletter and congratulations to Chief Jakari Young from 2011 to 2021. Awesome job, awesome leadership. So very glad to see that, that crime is down considerably, except for in that one area that we're gonna work really hard on. And I'm not gonna say it out loud. We're gonna work real hard on that. And I think, oh, one last thing. I know that we talked last week about, I mean, last meeting about, about the redistricting and the, the company that's gonna look at our redistricting. And I just have a question, because I was reading today that the governor has offered his own redistricting map. And so I was just wondering, how much weight will that hold with, with, with ours? Will that hold zero weight or?
No, he doesn't control ours. He's, he's offering that for the state.
Huh?
No. No, he's, he's not controlling ours, so he won't. I don't think that'll have any effect.
And I just want to make sure that our, our, our people that are working on ours will be very independent as best for the city of Daytona Beach. And the track and field team is here today? And they're gonna come up later on and they're gonna speak about their program, their mentoring program, and what their needs are going forward, and I hope you all will support them. And that's all my comments tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Will you pass those around then? I have one too. Pass those around then. And you can have one. Two, three. There you go. You can pass that around too. I gave you one. You need one, two, three? There you go. And, uh, one, two, three. Okay. First of all, I would like to, I'll try to be as quick as possible considering all things, but not too quick. The Mayor's Fitness Challenge got off to a great start last night. We had a great crowd of excited participants. And we're anticipating implementing the winner's mantra. W-I-N-N-E-R-S or E-E-R. We want to drink water. We want to intermittently fast. We want to say no to things that we shouldn't be eating, and we want to have good nutrition. We want to exercise, and we want to get adequate sleep. And as the defending champion of the last Mayor's Fitness Challenge, I'm rooting for someone else to win, not named Viecher. So let's, let's all work hard to make sure that we, we get out there and, and exercise. And we're still asking more folks to join. And there's nothing better than a little friendly banter when you're out exercising and having fun. But we have great fellowship, and if you have bad knees, we have low-impact activities. Some of it is just walking and you just, you can still participate. So I encourage everyone to sign up and get engaged. The next round of COVID funds, when it comes, I want us to be thoughtful of what will hopefully be Tirti Small, which will be a community center. And much of what we hope to do, at least I hope to do, and we'll talk about this as time moves on, with some of those funds should be centered around a partnership with the school board and some of the things that we were not able to do in the last round, especially surrounding mental health. We didn't do much on mental health. We didn't do anything. We want to be able to do, I like the literacy. We want to do parenting classes. Early childhood literacy, which we didn't do anything on early, before kids get to school. And I've had a discussion with the superintendent on some of the things that, you know, he'd like to do and I, and I'd like to do and what we'd like to be able to partner to use some of those funds in some of those areas. So I'm just laying that out. Of course, I will have a more detailed layout of that as we get closer to that time. Now, what I have shared with you all tonight is related to something that's, that's very sensitive in our community. And, you know, I, I wanted to do this after we got past 2 o'clock bar closing, but I've had this in my queue for almost a year. And what you're looking at is this form right here says Mayor's Outreach Program Introducing Vacation Rentals in the Surfside Village area. What I did was I took, I had, I have a group of folks who participate on the Mayor's Outreach Committee, and we went out in this particular area of Surfside Village. And you can, I'll read that, this for the record. This is what we shared with 112 residents, homeowners, all homesteaded. We didn't talk to everyone, but we did drop this off to 112 people. Surfside Village, the area of East ISB to Oak Ridge and Halifax to A1A is a perfect place for Daytona Beach to offer vacation rentals. The large number of smaller homes with easy access to the beach and plenty of room for new businesses to accommodate these visitors in the surrounding area is a winning combination. With changes happening now on Oak Ridge and soon East ISB, Daytona's beachside is poised for a boom. Some of the reasons Mayor Henry believes offering vacation rentals is an excellent way to improve Surfside Village. Hope you all know where Surfside Village is. And boost our Main Street area. It encourages homeowners and investors to improve dilapidated properties. We have a lot of them in that area, but not as many as I once thought. It's actually getting a lot better. Increased property value equals more money for public amenities and infrastructure, provides additional income opportunities for residents and owners. Visitors staying in vacation rental bring new life to an area. Let's think about Main Street. Think about people visiting the Main Street area. Think about what we're asking to do with Main Street. And the overall plan to revitalize Main Street from an infrastructure perspective, to revitalize it from a tourism perspective, and a lot of the things that the city manager and I have talked about, and some of which we'll talk about next month, include, you know, us trying to create, you know, like a, a, a shopping district or a out, indoor festival area, you know? And, and we want to have areas for people to walk to, so we're gonna help hopefully create those spaces. But we also want residents who are visiting in that area to walk those areas and have places to go. But right now, when I was down on Main Street talking to some of the vendors, they talked about the reality that the people in this area now, they don't walk to Main Street. And there are not as many people in that area now who are interested in walking to Main Street. But what our goal is, is at least from, from my, my perspective, is that if we open this up to vacation rentals, you will create an atmosphere for the tourists who visit Daytona to stay in that area, and they will be just adjacent to Main Street, and they'll have someplace to go, we hope, if we can help to create that environment. Visitors will patronize existing businesses, and more will open up. Families that prefer a home setting to rooms in a hotel currently have to go to a different city. We don't have a lot of that in Daytona Beach. Licensing, regulation, and oversight bringing vacation rentals into the sunshine will minimize any negative impact. I think that's the most important bullet right there. The bottom line is that most people are concerned about vacation rentals because they fear licensing. They fear a lack of regulation. They fear a lack of oversight. And they also fear, a lot of people don't want it in their neighborhood. Well, when we walked these 112 home-stated properties, we talked to, I think it was, I mean, I wrote it down. We talked to 38 homeowners. 27 of them that we talked to were in support of vacation rentals in the area. Nine had no opinion. Two people in the area opposed it. Now, there were another, obviously, uh, there's another 60 or 70 homes that we didn't actually speak to anyone. Now, the second, and the reason that I mention that is that we went out and canvassed the area to talk to folks. Now, we know that, you know, there're gonna be folks that may not be in favor of this. At the end of the day, I've met with our city attorney, met with our deputy city manager, our city manager, and, and I'll allow them to speak to this. One of the concerns that most people have had is that if you add to the number of vacation rentals that it might throw out what you've already done. And the reality is that we can regulate in this area and give permission without impacting the rest of the city. And I'm only talking about a narrow strip on the beachside that I believe that if we would allow it there, it would, one, give visitors a space that they, they, an option that they don't currently have in Daytona Beach. Two, it would, it would encourage those who own those properties to take them to another level. Invest in those properties. Beautify that area. And the third thing is that if you look at the second sheet that I gave you, this comes from the property appraiser's office. And the bottom line is that if you look at that area, which is the top area there, only 13% of those homes in that area are homesteaded. As opposed to if you go to adjacent areas close by, excuse me. If you go to adjacent areas close by, it's almost 25% and 28%. The property values in that area are significantly lower than they are in other areas. So what I would like is to know is, is this something that this commission would consider opening itself to? I'm in favor of considering it and asking staff to bring something before us for consideration. Is this something that you all would, would?
I'm absolutely for it.
Who else would consider it or not consider it? Yeah, ask a question.
The rest of the city.
It won't, right?
Well, there, there is a legal issue, and I'd like to share, Mayor, the research I've done for you with regard to this with the rest of the commission, so they can be fully advised.
That's right.
But the legal issue has to do with the state preemption. There is a, a partial state preemption for the regulation of short-term rentals. There's also a grandfather clause in there for our prior adopted code. So to start with the prior adopted code, we allow short-term rentals in certain areas and we prohibit them in others. They're primarily allowed in tourist districts. The language of the preemption, and I say it's a partial preemption, which is the basis for my opinion, is, is very specific. And the courts will read, you know, these preemptions specifically as well. So the state law says that there is a preemption to the state for regulation and that local governments may not prohibit vacation rentals or regulate the duration or frequency, or frequency of the rental. So what the mayor's proposing is not either of those. It's not prohibiting and it's not regulating the duration or frequency. It's instead adding to our stable of vacation rentals. So in my opinion, that, that would not violate the state's preemption. Now, I should say, we can always be sued, and we. violate the state's preemption. Now, I should say, we can always be sued. And we have been sued over this issue in the past. When we re-adopted in 2015 what we call the Clarion Code, we re-adopted the entire code. And as part of that re-adoption, we revised some definitions as to what vacation rentals were, under other accommodations in our code. We were challenged on that. We won. And so I feel as if we have some certainty with regard to that issue, whether any amendment would eliminate our grandfathered status. So in my opinion, I think we're good to go ahead and add to our vacation rentals because that doesn't violate the very specific language of the preemption.
Okay, so what you're saying is, if you approve this section of town, it's not going to set a precedent where my residents in Zone 2 are going to end up getting pulled in with that if a lawsuit occurs or whatever. You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
No answer?
I understand what you're saying, and that's maybe not a legal question, more of a political question, you know, whether or not you're establishing a precedence or an expectation on others.
Well, I think it is a legal question. I personally think that eventually the state of Florida, like the mayor was talking about a few minutes ago, are going to make the decision for us, no matter what we do here. And prior to that, I would like to see us not do anything to go ahead and upset what we already have to where it sets a precedent where it goes citywide. However, majority rule.
So my question is something along the lines of, I was under the impression that residents were coming forward, and they were wanting the expansion to occur, right? And that the ruling was that if we allowed expansion of vacation rentals, that it would in fact go citywide. And this has been going on for a number of years. It's cost us two lawsuits. It's been really expensive, right? Maybe not for us, because we have attorneys on staff, but certainly for people who had their opinion, you know, with regard to this. You have a problem with, so you have a look, I'm just wondering, you?
No, I'm asking, you said it was very expensive.
I thought it was expensive. Anytime you're in a lawsuit, it costs the residents money. To me, any lawsuit is expensive. So that's my personal opinion. I'm just questioning your look. I'm wondering, you, it's looked like you have a question?
Question my look, I'm listening to you.
Okay. So we've gone through two rounds of this with different people, sometimes the same people with a lawsuit. And now we're in a position where I think it's the very area that they were in dispute, that they wanted to expand. We're now saying that this is an idea that we're putting forward, that we want to expand the area. Is that right?
I don't know.
Is that the area that they wanted to expand was in this particular corridor?
I
Were you involved in those?
That, the lawsuit challenged our re-adoption of the code, and I'm certain that the people that filed that suit were spread out throughout the city. It wasn't location-specific. It was a citywide challenge. So they were challenging our grandfathered status on a citywide basis. If they had prevailed, short-term rentals would have been allowed throughout the city.
I'm curious. What if they had said, we just want to have this area? Would that have made a difference? If they had been narrow and said specifically, we want to have short-term rentals only in this area and not citywide, would that have made a difference to us?
Well, the legal issue is slightly different. They were challenging our grandfathered status. The question here is, you know, can we expand the areas in which we allow short-term rentals? And then the, you know, the follow-up question, I suppose, is will that impact our grandfathered status? When the state first passed the preemption, all local government agencies, and myself included with regard to my legal opinions, were very conservative because nobody really knew how that language would be applied. And so certainly at that time, I was not recommending that we move forward with any change with regard to short-term rentals because that language hadn't been interpreted by the courts. And there still hasn't been any precedent established other than our local lawsuit. So, you know, there is a risk. I'm not telling you there's no risk. There's always a risk of lawsuit. But I am telling you, based on the suit that we were involved in, and based on the very specific language of the preemptive statute, I'm confident that the city would be able to defend that suit.
So interestingly, interestingly, do I believe that I'm in support of things that, anything that we can come up with, whether it's putting pictures on the drains, whether it's murals, whether it's small business development, whether it's improving business corridors, whether it's walkability, whether it's housing, anything that is going to improve that particular area, I would be in favor of because I think it needs something. I don't know what that is exactly, but hopefully together we can figure out what that's going to look like. But for that particular area, considering that the goal is walkability, I know some of the residents, and one woman in particular, I went to her door and I said, you are directly in this area. How do you feel? And she said, I moved here specifically for the energy of that environment. So we had an entertainment corridor, and that was part of our entertainment corridor. We're activating East ISB. It'll become a walkable area also. If it's a narrow area between Seabreeze and East ISB, that area needs some help, whatever help that is. I would be interested in hearing what that looks like for that particular area. To the south of that, I have highly residential neighborhoods. And
Don't even need to talk about that.
But in the main corridor, as part of our E-zone concept, it would be interesting.
I don't even need to talk about anything other than the area that I'm specifically interested in. It's, I understand the dynamics of the overall community, and I am interested in homeownership, and I'm interested in making those areas more residential and stronger and buttressing their foundations. But this is a specific area that I think could not only use the energy, but is also ideal for expanding the Daytona Beach brand. And it's also completely congruent with our long-term plan for Main Street and the bigger picture of other things that we're going to be discussing. So, yes, sir.
One more question. That would mean that we're just basically just going to rezone Surfside Village area. Is that correct?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Before, because I'm really curious. I don't like spending money. I don't like to spend my own money. I don't like to spend anyone else's money. So the problem before the two lawsuits was that they were wanting it to be citywide. Was that the issue with the lawsuits? Was the wording of it?
They wanted citywide.
And if they had changed their wording, and they had said specifically this area, that would have been a different situation for us?
No, their legal challenge would have been the same.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Trager, do you have any thoughts?
I'm still in line, miss over.
Okay. All right. I think we have four people, and even you, that are willing to discuss it.
Even me.
Even, I'm asking, even you?
Even me, yes, I accept.
Well, even you, you didn't say, you didn't say, I am in favor of having this come back.
What I said was, I would be interested in if it deals with, if it deals
With redeveloping the area, helping the area, any ideas that come forth from that, I would be interested in hearing about them. Anything that works with redevelopment, you may do that.
First, that you're in favor of.
Even me.
Bring that back.
Yes, even me, yes.
Okay. Read it the way you want to read it. Yes.
Even me.
Even you.
Even me.
Yeah, all right. All right, I got at least five evens. Thank you.
I should point out, this would need to go to Planning Board as well. I'm not sure how you'd want to handle maybe a preliminary review.
Yeah, we need preliminary review. We don't need to go to them before we can begin and prepare something and come back. Okay. All right. That concludes my remarks for the evening. I want to thank the city manager for helping to orchestrate the state of the city. I want to thank Susan Sabone, Bobby Yarborough, and her wonders for helping bring this part to life. And I want to thank city staff in general for what I think has been a great year, and we're looking forward to an even greater year. Mr. Manager?
Yeah. Just want to also echo the staff, the internal staff from the Public Works Department that worked to transform our community, our chambers. They were hearing some of the comments about the lighting in the area and came in, and we just asked them, really, could they just paint and work on the lights? And next thing you know, they took down the curtains, they painted the walls. And it was quite impressive. We all, let's just know, we all came here and we didn't know what was going on. But they did a good job, and now they're looking at how do we try to deal with our chairs and also the red walls. But I do want to commend them publicly on the record, and they've already said they like Four Rivers. So they made that very clear to me in passing. So it appears that I will be providing them with Four Rivers for the work that they did. And I'm so glad that when I looked at the commissioner's budget, it was, the money was there for their chambers. So I'll feed them on your behalf, Four Rivers. The money was there. So just wanted to thank them. Also, a couple of us will be traveling with the Chamber of Commerce to Tallahassee on Monday and Tuesday for an inner-city tour. The Planning Director, Dennis, will be going with us. We're going to be looking at College Town and some of the other areas that encompass around Florida A&amp;M University and Florida State University that connect also similar to our Main Street, B Street, and our colleges. We have six colleges and universities. So we've been in conversations with them with some of the projects and what they call the Domini Station in Tallahassee, which is an incubator that they use with the three colleges up there. So we're going to go travel to Tallahassee and look at, do some tours of those areas and try to bring back some of those ideas to this area, and also talk with some of our key departments that might help us with some funding. So just want to let you know that on Monday and Tuesday are our meeting dates in Tallahassee. One of the key things that has come up that I wanted to just bring before your attention, and I know that the city attorney has pulled up some of the documents in reference to city facility waivers, because we've been having a lot of people wanting to get waivers and be able to use our facilities, and just wanted to get some direction on how you all wanted to do that as an administrative thing or not. And if, Jagger, if you could read what our policy says in reference to that and how we do our fees, that would be good before I go to the next step.
Right, yeah, let me give you some background. So we have a resolution. It's 16-296, which establishes your facility use fees throughout the city for all city facilities. And that resolution is adopted pursuant to Chapter 82 of your code. So it is very specific in terms of, you know, meeting rooms and what the fees were. I mean, every basic part of the facility that can be rented out, all the fees are in this resolution. The question that's come up, as I understand it, is whether or not, you know, the city can act as a sponsor or whether or not we would waive fees in certain conditions, you know, if it may be a 501(c)(3), et cetera. The way your code is set up, there is no basis for a waiver of fees. Now, that's not to say we couldn't change it. I'm just telling you what it is. But as you're currently set, you have a couple of exceptions in terms of your fees. You're not to charge a fee to another government agency acting within the scope of their authority. So just as the county may allow us to have an event in one of their facilities, under our code, we can allow the county, acting within its official authority, to have an event in our facilities without charge. So that's one exception. With regard to 501(c)(3) charitable organizations, we would charge a half price for our fees that are outlined in the schedule. So I think that kind of gets you where you need to be. I guess the further discussion is, you know, whether you'd want additional exceptions.
Yeah, just want to make sure, because we are getting a lot of requests, and I just
That's when you get into the murky water, y'all.
Yeah, so I want to make sure that we, so when people do call, that's outside of a governmental agency or a nonprofit, we are going to be, we will state that there is a 50% base unless it is an official government. And we had recently with the governmental entity, and I contacted the county manager to make sure, because I've read about endorsements and all of that, and wanted to make sure that the county was endorsing a particular meeting. So I just want to make sure we're clear on what the policy says. And then if there are nonprofits, which are also churches, et cetera, that come forth, there is a 50% fee.
May I read that? Just so I want to make sure we're very clear on that language. The exception to the standard fee, it states, government agencies, and there, I have to read that with the other exception. That would mean government agencies not performing an official function. Maybe they've got an employee event or something like that. But government agencies, educational institutions, and 501(c)(3) organizations obtaining, and there's a comma before the 501(c)(3), obtaining permits for sports camps, classes, or leagues open to the public will pay one-half of the base fee listed. So it's even very specific with regard to the 501(c)(3). It has to be for sports camps, classes, or leagues open to the public.
Okay. I'm very good with that, actually, and I think you have to have definition. Otherwise, your staff will get into trouble, and they will be acting on your behalf in ways that you may not agree with. So you cannot leave it in a nefarious no-man's-land because it comes back on us.
Now, that's not to say, you know, you couldn't come back and make an exception. We can talk about how that might occur. If there were an ongoing exception, we would want to amend the code. But I think the city could act as a sponsor and be involved in the event and not have to pay the fee.
But that should come before the commission.
But that should come to the commission.
And that's a different thing. It's like the Boys and Girls Club, right?
Right.
And that's different. And it's different when someone partners with the city, if they partner through leisure services and they're offering a dance class to children that benefits our children and they're not trying to make a profit. A lot of times, we have to be careful about who wants to use our facility to make a profit. If you're using our facility to serve, then that's different. We want to partner when we can and give a discount, and that's why you have 501(c)(3).
I have a question.
We need to come back to the commission. And Boys and Girls Club, you mentioned as an example, they have a lease with the city, so that's how that's approved. I do believe we partner with specific organizations to provide training for gymnastics or that sort of thing. That's an ongoing license agreement.
I'm chuckling because that was the example I was discussing with the city manager, the dance class example. So the question I had was specifically, over the past few years, a lot of issues have come up with the down deposit or the deposit when you're renting the space. I think there's a 250 deposit. Is that correct? Is there any, let me start fresh. Is there any deposit required to rent a space with the city?
I think there is a deposit required to rent space.
So given that, some of the concern has been that some of the nonprofits cannot afford the deposit. That has come up. And the question is, the 50% reduction, does that apply to the deposit also or just the facility rental fee? And I'm going to give you the example. Sometimes people have events, 501(c)(3) scholarship events, they raise their money at the event, let's say, but they have to give the down deposit or the facility deposit ahead of time, and they can't always afford that. And they feel as though the deposit fee is money that could be used for another scholarship. That's just a question I'm putting out there in case it should come up. I just want clarity, that's all.
The $250 deposit is also refundable.
I was going to say.
They get that back. But she's saying they may not have it up front to pay for it.
Yeah, I just can't make an exception to everything. I just can't, just the way I feel.
It has come up more than once, so thank you.
Okay. All right.
I think we got clarity, that's it.
Okay, you have clarity?
Mm-hmm. That concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Jagger?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so a couple of the commissioners have mentioned the right-of-way vacation issue, which has been addressed by the public and discussed by the commission really for quite a while now, over a year. I want to talk to you about getting some further direction from you, maybe taking a slightly different direction. If you recall at the last meeting, we talked about the potential for an eminent domain action, and I was directed to obtain a cost estimate to go through that. And I have circulated to you a retainer agreement from an attorney who would prepare that on your behalf, if you so direct. But before we get to that issue, let me talk about a new direction based on some research I've done to see if we can avoid those costs and maybe still get to an answer as to what to do with this piece of property. So just by way of background, so we're all familiar with what we're talking about. Back in May of 2020, the city vacated a particular piece of right-of-way as we've done many times before. This was an 180-foot by 30-foot stretch, if you could put up the aerial. This was a stretch that is between two residential properties on South Halifax Drive. And this vacation was based on the application of the adjacent property owners. They were represented by Michael Snapinstall of Cobb &amp; Cole. Prior to the city approving the vacation, it had to go to Planning Board back in June. Prior to the city approving the vacation, it had to go to Planning Board back in June of 2019. So there is a two-step approval process. Your LDC does authorize, as does state law, vacation of right-of-way in the way that was done. It requires evidence that the right-of-way is not needed by the city and is not foreseeably needed by the city for road right-of-way purposes. And it also should be consistent with your comprehensive plan. So staff made those determinations. It came before you for the final approval, and the right-of-way was vacated. Since you vacated the property, right-of-way, by the way, the property at 2314 South Halifax, I don't know whether that's to the north or south there, but it was sold to another buyer, you know, a fair market value, you know, the whole property. And so you have a buyer who's now involved in this process as well. We're not simply dealing with the original parties to the application for the vacation of right-of-way. We all know, of course, since the vacation, we've had plenty of city comments with regard to, you know, this property being removed from public access. We also have heard from Mr. Schnapp, installer, the attorney, that the property owners have issued a letter to the neighborhood property owners indicating that they don't object to the neighborhood using or continuing to use the river access. So those are essentially the facts, you know, as we know them today. The question comes up, you know, what's the legal effect of the right-of-way vacation? You know, once the city says, we no longer have a use for this, or we never had a use for it, for right-of-way, where does that title go? Well, we're very careful when we vacate right-of-way not to give a legal opinion or to make any representation as to what happens to that title once the city vacates its right-of-way. The title, in fact, goes as required by law. And depending on the facts, you know, the title may go in different ways. In general, the rule of thumb is if you vacate right-of-way, the title goes to your adjacent property owners. That may not be the case in every circumstance. If your right-of-way is established by plat, as this was, and the plat indicates other uses, the vacation of the right-of-way doesn't extinguish those other uses which were dedicated in the plat. And therein kind of lies the question that we're dealing with in this case, with the property owners. And so what I'm suggesting to you as a way to address that is to go to court, seek a declaratory action as to what the intent of the original developer was when they platted this. And if we could go to the next slide, I'll explain, you know, why there is a legal issue here at all. So this is the original plat, and I know you can't read it, but maybe you can get a sense for what we're trying to interpret. This is the plat from 1926 for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision. The area highlighted in yellow, and I'll have to read it for you, of course, is the easement that we're discussing, the right-of-way access, I should say. And this is only one page of the plat. This is obviously a much larger plat. It identifies the roads and the lots, and that's really what plats do. It allows the property owner to subdivide the lots and sell them. Remember, we're in 1926, and we're trying to interpret a document from that time period to determine what the original platter's intent was. Well, we identify, and you can see in this, you know, partially Halifax Drive, Peninsula Drive, and the full plat identifies all the roads. This one access is referred to as a river approach. And so the question arises, which I would recommend that you ask the court to resolve for us, is, you know, what is a river approach? If the court determines that the river approach is only a roadway and we vacate that roadway, and although we won't get to the title issue, because that's not our issue, the title would likely, and I don't advise the property owners on this, but the title would likely go to the adjacent property owners. If on the other end, the court determines, and I think this would be the city's position, depending on your direction, that this phrase, river approach, may be right-of-way and also park, based on the historical use, then the vacation of the right-of-way doesn't extinguish the dedicated park use, and the title doesn't go to the adjacent owners, and the public continues to have that public right of access. So that would be my recommendation to you, instead of going to a very expensive eminent domain process to fully reacquire that property, assuming it did go to the adjacent owners, which we really don't know. Typically, if there's an issue about how that property is transferred as a result of a right-of-way vacation, the owners figure it out. They file their own DEC action, or they file a quiet title action if they can't figure out how that property's been divided as a result of the vacation. The city has no opinion with regard to that. But we do have a question with regard to what the remaining rights are, because if, in fact, the intent was back in 1926 for that to be also park dedication, then the city may have an obligation to maintain that, that park for the public. The specific language in the plat, by the way, says that the Bridgeport Heights Incorporated Corporation hereby dedicates all streets, avenues, roadways, alleys, alleyways, and parks, as shown on the plat, for the use of the public forever. So we've heard that language quoted in the past. So that would be my suggestion. We go ahead and file a DEC action. Let's ask the court to tell us, tell the city, that is, what any remaining rights and obligations the city has with regard to operation of a park. If the original intent from the developer was that that be either right-of-way and park or solely park, then all of the property owners who we've been hearing from would continue to have that right of access, and the city would then go back and start maintaining the property as it historically has done.
Not only the property owners, but anyone.
Everyone. And again, this boils down a little bit to interpretation again, because this phrase, for use of the public forever, it's unclear, or I should say it's ambiguous, at least from a first read, without going into extrinsic evidence, whether or not that's intended to be the public, as in all of the public, or it's just intended to be limited to the subdivision. So that'll be another issue for the court to decide.
Okay. And so I think most of us would agree with that assessment and want to go down that line of logic, but I also would like to hear your other findings as it relates to cost.
All right. Well, I need a direction with regard to that as well. I've got the attorney on board. If you'd like to authorize me to go forward, and we have to take a vote for all of this.
I think we should do this first and then have him hold off, and if we
That would be my recommendation.
successful with this, then we'll go down that road if we decide.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
So are we in agreement with that?
Yes. And I would like to have you put that to a vote, because based on your authorization, I will proceed to draft the complaint and get that filed. The defendants, by the way, would be the neighboring property owners. And of course, others may join the suit that have an interest as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved. You'll have to say it, like he moved forward with a declaration to determine whether this is a park.
Just authorize me to file a DEC action to determine the city's rights, if any, remaining in this vacated right-of-way parcel.
So moved.
Second.
We take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Henry.
Okay, does anyone want to speak on this item? It's now up for vote.
Public, do we have public, it's a public
Come up and fill out a form and you can speak.
You can fill out a form.
Do you want to forego your time at the end and speak now? Okay, are you Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. Should I have Sarah?
Sarah's an attorney.
Mr. Brown, do you want to forego your time at the end and speak now, or do you want to fill out another form and speak now and at the end?
If anyone wishes to speak to this matter, whether or not we file a lawsuit, you should speak now, before the vote, yes.
Thank you, Sarah. That's 444 Seabreeze Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. I applaud the city for taking the action that they have so far and for taking a deeper look into this issue. Thank you, Mr. Jagger, for your comments as to this alternative. This is, as I mentioned in my letter of July 2021, a park. We think that. We've always felt that. We felt that from the beginning. I do have some other thoughts on some of the legal issues that I can discuss with Mr. Jagger separately regarding public hearing and notice that I've also spoken with Attorney Gross about as well. But I do urge you to find in favor of this, to vote in favor of filing that DEC action. I think this is the right way to resolve it. I think it's obviously far less costly than a taking, even though, you know, I know a little bit about the cost of eminent domain as well. But thank you very much for looking into this from a different standpoint. Sometimes a new, fresh set of eyes on something will get the job done the way that it needs to be. So I urge each of you to vote in favor of filing the DEC action. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
And our next speaker is Frederick Brown. You can fill it out and give it to her then, after you speak.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Chris Ridge, Daytona Beach. I want to first thank Commissioner May, Commissioner Strickland, and of course, Mayor Henry, who, after a year of me presenting this, re-presenting it, came out, looked at the property, saw what happened. You know, it's a shame we had to get down this highway, and of course, it's a subject I talked about numerous times, did not want to see the city get in additional expenses. And it's a shame that all the procedures weren't followed in the beginning. It's a shame that you didn't know what you were voting on. It's an even further shame that nobody was notified. It's a shame that it was done under the dark of COVID, where nobody was allowed to be in the meeting, and in six seconds, it was all given away. When we found out about it, of course, we took it to heart. There are a number of things that were left out in the city attorney's report on the history of this. It was maintained by the city as a canoe access. There were signs there. They were taken down. They were replaced. The city did provide additional pavement in there for parking, for access to it. The city's history is pretty clear. This was not just abandoned land. They took good care of it. And it wasn't until, you mentioned the property came up for sale, that the legal action was filed by a particular law firm. And I would really like to see our city be not a city run by particular law firms filing particular actions for particular clients for their financial benefit, that would actually take a look at some of these things. And again, I really applaud you, the mayor. I mean, it was heartfelt when you came down and visited, saw what we had, what was given to the public forever, and what was lost. But again, the notification, and this is something that Commissioner May pointed out, is so critical. You know, we didn't find out about it until the surveyors were down, and it's like, what's going on here? And we took action through the social media networks, Nextdoor and some of the others, and that's how I get to meet a lot of these people and take action on this. It is important that with the change of society, that notifications to the citizens find paths that are current with what we're doing today. It's obvious that the decline of newspapers, very few people even read them anymore, legal requirements to put them in the newspaper doesn't cut it. And so we have to look possibly at changing, you know, modernizing for this century the way that we notify the citizens. Because that right there, I think, was the key, because I would have loved to talk to you before this got way down the highway instead of after the fact. But again, I want to thank the commissioners who did step in and support this, and I still hope we can avoid some of those legal expense. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that
Do you want to speak on this, sir? Okay, you want to come up and
But you can go with your permission while he's coming.
No, no, go ahead, come on. No, no, that's going to be it. So come on, come on. I just wanted to make sure that people understood, Mr. Jagger, we did change our policies regarding notification, right? Just to be sure that people understand, we did change it.
That's correct. We did amend the vote to provide notice to property owners within, I believe, 150 feet.
Okay, and that's something the city is doing now?
That's something
That's we're doing, okay.
Yeah, but I want us to do more on notification.
100%, but it's more than we had before, right? Thank you.
Lee Kinzer.
Do you, or do you still want to speak at the end, or is this
I'll do it now, it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can I go?
Yeah.
My name's Lee Kinzer. I live at 2318 South Peninsula. Thank you for finally realizing that it could be a park, and it is a park, and it has been a park since 1926. I just want everybody to understand that the original applicants and that the new resident, the transfer process of the property and the sale of the property went on during the application. So the new residents were aware that the application had been filed and that it had not been approved as of yet. Does everybody understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that's important to know, and I think that's about it, really. I hope everybody votes yes for it, because it's been a long road, and I think we can get there by the end of the day. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Lee.
Anyone else like to speak on this issue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Come back, thank you.
In the future, I think we should notify residents, maybe up to 500 feet. I talked to Commissioner May about this.
It's more than, it's way more than what it is now, because the issue, there's been a lot of other issues that affect people. There's way more than 100, 200, and I don't even know 500 feet.
It's a long way, and I think it should be done by registered mail, and the postings should be, I mean, there should be proof of it, and the proof should be the burden of the applicant when they do this, not the burden of the city, not the burden of the other people. The applicant should incur the cost and bear that burden of proof.
It's just another layer of saying that you're protecting and you care about your residents also. They have rights to know things when changes are coming, and we have to do more. And, you know, maybe at some point, we can have a 30-minute before a meeting workshop on what we can do and what's legally possible.
I need to correct myself, or I should say, Deputy City Attorney Ben Gross has corrected me via text here. The notice is 500 feet, not 150.
I thought when you said 100.
It's 500 feet. And that was just adopted recently.
It was.
And I thought part of that was that it was the applicant who had to pay for it, not the city. I thought that was part of it. It's the applicant, right, not the residents.
But I believe it's still first-class mail and not registered mail, and it should be registered mail with a signature required.
I don't know about that, but
Yeah, all of our notices are actually first-class mail now. Dennis Marzak, we also added, as far as the right-of-way vacation, legal advertising requirements in a posting of the property. So there'll be a sign up at the property. So anybody who's familiar with the property that's passing by will be able to see a sign saying it's going to be in action on the property.
How many days is that?
10 days. The sign goes up 10 days before. The legal ad, I believe, goes out 15 days prior to, I'm sorry?
Might need 30 days. I just, I just don't know, because I know if I lived in a place, and I live in a place now where I see a for-sale sign on a piece of property that I don't think should be developed on, you know, I don't think that that needs to be a buffer. So I know that I'm watching it, like, how am I going to respond to that? But yeah, okay. Go ahead, do you have anything else? I didn't want to interrupt you. Okay.
I just wanted to say that in the future, when somebody applies for a vacation of right-of-way or public property like that, we need to be very, very careful, because property is priceless. You see what we're having here, you know? We don't know what it's going to cost before this is over with, if anything. But most cities nationwide are doing everything they can to preserve green space for their residents.
Yeah, we need to do more.
And we're, you know, we talk about, well, we'll vacate this, or let's build condos on City Island and that sort of thing. I am not forgiving up one inch of public property to anybody for any reason, period. I'm on record. Thank you.
Can I say that you just said build condos? Did you just say you build condos in City Island?
No, I didn't say I would.
Oh, I was just checking. I was just checking. Things get on the record in a funny way.
For the record, I just want to say that I did, the manager did take me to see the property, so I have seen it.
This suit would be handled by in-house attorneys, so there'd be no outside counsel cost. The only fee that I can imagine at this point would be a filing fee to get into court. So I believe, I don't know exactly what that is offhand, it may be $500 to filing fee.
Okay, wonderful. Do we have any other, we have a motion in a second?
I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Jagger's help in wanting to get this resolved.
Absolutely. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. All right. Do we have any other comments? All right, this concludes our commission comments, and this time, we will now hear from the citizens of Daytona Beach.
Okay, our first speaker is Antoinette Noah, Noah Allen? Okay, our first speaker is Antoinette Noah Ellen, sorry. And on deck is Tony Wilson. We'll put him in the room.
Good evening. My name is Antoinette Noah Ellen. I'm a Flagler County resident, living in Little C Lane, Palm Coast, Florida. However, I am in Daytona Beach every day. Thank you for hearing us out. My, I'm here on behalf of the Daytona Express Track and Field Club. It's an AAU track and field club for kids ages 5 to 17. And we have our sponsorship proposal to bring before the chamber today, because we need the city to help join our investment efforts. These kids, and we have some parents and a few athletes, if you all could stand just a sec. And we have come- Everybody, these kids work very hard. This is just an example of one child who just happens to be my child. But my daughter, she's number one in the state of Florida for field events in her age group. And in 2019, when the city, we came before the city before for funding assistance, she placed 7th in the nation for 10-year-old shoplift. I was like, oh my God. But we, this organization has been established since 2013. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. We actually, we mentor these kids on and off the track and field. We're not just coaches or parents. We're actually mentoring these kids, because even, we have Mr. Noah right here. He's the youngest, and he's done very well since he started. But he's tremendous as well on the field. We teach these kids to have a team effort, to gain confidence, to set and attain goals. And we just really need the city to please consider joining our investment effort for these kids to help us get them to the Nationals, which every year, more than likely, we have students, we have athletes that reach that level. In 2019, we actually had 10 athletes that competed in the 2019 AAU Junior Olympics. So thank you for your time, and I want you all to please, if you have a chance, to look at our sponsorship packets.
What do you have?
Yeah, we were going to put them in the mailbox, so they don't get lost. We'll pass them down.
Okay.
Do you want to give me the, and I'll just pass them, give me the whole thing.
Do you have one more? Okay, you got it. You got enough?
Oops. Okay, let me see how I do this.
Okay.
Oops, sorry. There we go.
And we're, it's not a very daunting request, by no means. But we, just to let you guys know, we also incorporate the entire city. We're practicing at Seabreeze High School, and as soon as Mainland High School is finished, we're going to incorporate that as our second practice location as well.
How many kids do you all have, did you work with?
Right now, we have 30.
And are we sponsoring your tournament, or are you asking for sponsorship just for the travel when you go to Nationals?
Actually, for the entire duration of the season. Nationals right now, just to get, say, 10 kids on average with the accommodations, because we would have to be there for multiple days, that's almost upwards of $5,000, just for that particular meet. But we're looking at going to 7 to 10 track meets throughout central Florida for the entire season.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I could, I'd like to just do $250 of my Bike Week funds. Is that possible? So I think the first year you started, I think, the first year you started, I was involved in your organization. I was there one year when I first became a commissioner, and I came out and I did some work with the kids.
Correct.
And I'm looking forward to doing it again.
Thank you.
I think it'll be very nice. So if they could take care of that, that would be great.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Strickland said he would do 250 as well.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay, I want to get from the rest of the folks. Well, I know they got something to say.
So our next speaker is Tony Wilson, and then on deck is Frederick Brown, or, I'm sorry, Jared Rivers is Frederick.
Good evening, good evening, Tony Wilson. Born and raised in Daytona Beach, two-time state champion. I see some familiar faces, one of my coaches, trained one of the kids, his thenet son. I'm just really here to ask for your guys' support. Me growing up here, track was big in my life, sports, football as well, but it was through the city. You know, a lot of parents can't pay for it, and a lot of these kids don't have these avenues and platforms due to the funding. So what I'm really asking is for any support from any of you guys, you know, to match my energy. I'm the one that trains them. Woo, just, like I say, just asking for support. It could be a dollar, whatever you want. We're just trying to get, like I say, provide avenues for these kids to give them the advantages I have with sports being in youth. I like to say I've been around the world once, but I seen it twice. I wouldn't have did it without the help from Daytona Beach. That's, thank you.
I appreciate you coming up. I want you all to know that when he says that he is a two-time state champion, he's talking about the 200. He was a state champion in the 200, he was a state champion in football. And I know what track specifically did for him and coaches, and I'm very honored to see. And I also want you all to know that the young man earlier tonight that received the award for the Heimlich maneuver is his son. And so, what's y'all's, what's y'all's budget? What's you trying to get to?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Jared Rivers, I'm the founder of Daytona Express.
You want to pull the mic down a little bit?
I'm sorry. What we tried to do is, my kids, who are now older, ran on different Daytona teams. And that gentleman retired, so the team left. So we decided to pretty much take the ball and run with, not realizing what we were taking. So, part of our budget, it's very stressful, because we really don't get a lot of assistance from anything in the city. Just renting a track is $3,000 a year, just to get a track. We like to provide snacks at track meets. I don't know if anybody's ever been to a track meet. It's an all-day process. You're there at 6 o'clock in the morning, and depending on how well it's ran, you might not get out till 6 o'clock in the evening. And dealing with kids all day is a task. So, you know, we try to, we try to step it up by providing snacks, different things. It's much bigger than just track, though. We also provide a scholarship. We have, over the last two years, we've kind of been dormant because of COVID, but now we're back. But we provide scholarships. Ms. Sidney, I don't know if you're familiar with her, Sidney Wright, she first ran track with our team. She's also gone state, gone state. Now she's at Stanford. This is the impact that these teams have on these children. We've also done work with Daytona Beach Police Department. We had officers come out and coach, back when, you know, you had all that frustration between citizens, police officers. So we tried to combat that as well. We had Coach Noddy, though, he's also, he's a police officer. We also had a training with the kids on how to deal with, interaction with the police at the police department. We also do educational, we're big on education, very big on it. We check report cards, they make less than the B, it means lapsed, period. So, also, we have reading initiatives. I know she mentioned trying to get the reading test scores up. We're helping with, trying to help with that. So as far as funding, no dollars ever waste. Just getting a track alone, we haven't secured our track yet, because all the tracks have been redone, and they're trying to determine on where, on how much they're going to charge. It's a county thing. What would be a big help in the future, oh, I'm sorry. What would be a big help in the future is if the city had their own regulation track that you could rent out, or we could use.
Thank you, sir.
So, before you leave, Mr. Mayor, before you leave, I'm going to share a personal thing here, which I don't do very often about myself. In October, my father died. And he was a national-level track and field coach in South Africa. My mom was a high-ranking track and field person, and in South Africa, because we had apartheid, they would keep track of the times that the South African coloreds ran against the white times at the Olympics. We did very well, we just could never compete, right? So, I'm going to write you a business check. Thank you so much for your service, I appreciate it. And maybe at some point, we'll talk about something we can do in honor of my father. I think you would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that Tony, as you had mentioned, is Antonio's father that we just saw, that we just gave the award to earlier. And I actually taught Tony when he was a little younger than Antonio. So it just goes to, and I said that, and I reiterated that, just to show what he does with young children in his community. And I will say that, as his teacher, that I know what track and field and sports did for him. And you talk about you could regulate his behavior. If he couldn't do track and field and go to, if he couldn't go to the outside fun activities, you could regulate that behavior from Tony. So I said that to say that, that these things matter. They matter in the city of Daytona Beach, because we have men mentoring young, young boys. We have women mentoring young ladies and vice versa. But what I feel Daytona needs right now, a lot of, to continue to help Chief Young get these, for our crime to continue to go down, I just feel like we need lots and lots and lots of mentorship from men. And that's what this program is providing. They don't have all the dads here tonight, but there are quite a few more dads. I know Nicole's husband is very active, so they have quite a few more dads that are very hands-on dads in that program. And eventually, maybe we can come around and have some conversations about how we can expand your program and maybe, you know, do some different types of sponsorships with the city. But I just wanted to say that, yeah, they're doing good work in our community. They're doing great work in our community, and they're doing a lot of the heavy lifting that we don't have the time to do. And like I said, sometimes we can send go. That means you send, you send and you, you're going to go ahead and go via them. So we're going to help you via the resources that we send to you. So hopefully, some of the other people up here will help, and you'll definitely hear from us. And I'm very proud of you, and I'm very thankful for everything that you all do for those young children in the community, because I know it's hard work. I did track and field with my children for one year, and I'll never do that again. They will just be slow. And everybody knows that I am sports mom. Everything is sports, sports, sports with my kids, but nah, track and field, that's a different beast. So, thank you. And you'll hear more from me later.
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Before you come on up, Mr. Brown, but while they're coming, I'm going to go ahead from my Bike Week funds and they have a donation of 500 to go to this organization, and I too appreciate what you all have done.
Can we get a balance this week of our Bike Week funds, so I can determine what my donation will be?
We'll get them, yeah.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Chris and Ridge. Yeah, how do I follow it up? Commissioner May had a chance to meet my daughter. She was a track person, too. She held the 800-meter record at her school for quite a while, but then she diversed into lacrosse, where she was able to use her speed on the field, two-time state champion, should have been three. And then she went on to play four years for Florida State, captain of the team there. And she'll get mad at me for saying all this, but she won all Southeast League all four years. And it all started with track. We had an amazing coach at her school, this is over in Seminole County. I worked hand-in-hand with him. I can tell you, I know how many hours, I know all the hours you guys are putting in. And I just say, it's every hour is well worth the investment with the kids. The mentoring is outstanding. You know, just if the city can support that, I'm behind that 100%, so, just from personal experience, so. Just needed to add that in, but good luck to you guys, and... The other thing I want to add, too, with the nice thing with track, unlike some other sports, football, you have to have certain sizes and skills, which I've played, but track, there's so much diversity. And Commissioner May, I'm sorry you grew up in that environment, but at least here in the United States, we're allowed to compete here of all races and all backgrounds, and that is a great thing. And especially with the women, too, don't just put it on the boys. The track for women is pretty amazing as well. So I know it helped my daughter develop into the person she is today, and I'm glad Commissioner May got to meet my daughter. Yes to parents in California. A lot of what I had to say, of course, we've already talked about. Again, I'm very thankful for the city doing the right thing, and I'm looking forward to that. That said, and I have pointed out that there are other properties that have the same risk. Lennox Avenue in particular is one area in high risk. I've talked to some of the citizens in that area. That's another area that should be equal, should be also cleaned up and used. Instead of having a barricade down there, it should, again, be set up as a public river access. That goes along with the city comprehensive plan, which we didn't talk about, but I've mentioned numerous times. I think it's important we maintain that trend. And I know Mayor Henry supports the public use of the land and repairing rates for all the citizens, which, thank goodness, you know, I remember back in the 60s, yeah, it was a different world, and thank God, it's what it is today. One of the reasons I like Daytona a whole bunch, the reason I live here, it's not like it was back in the 60s. We made some great strides. The only other thing I wanted to talk about, which I guess we're going to do the second reading, was what's going on there at ISB. And I am concerned about digital signs on a major thoroughfare being a possible traffic distraction. So I'll have to talk about that in more depth later, but you'll be hearing from me.
Can I brag? My husband Warren littered four years, all four years at Seabreeze, when he was younger, much younger.
So our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck, we have Steve O'Now.
I never met a fast crapper.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. Warren, I didn't even realize they had track back in the 1800s.
I was low.
That's okay, I've known him for years.
I know you have.
I was at the county council yesterday, and luckily, we got the Veterans Memorial for our bridge. They passed it on the Echo. So Josh Wagner donated 200,000, the county matched it, and so they'll start this fall. Secondly- matched it, and so they'll start this fall. Secondly, it's been 17 years, and there are things that have come up over the 17 years that Jim was here that he would put off. And the other day, I was at a meeting, and one of the commissioners said, if we weren't in front of a camera, I'd whop you up on the side of the head, because I had made a comment about something that we worked on like 15 years ago. The city wanted to move out the Salvation Army off Blue Road. And we've been working on that for 15 years, and we haven't gotten anywhere. So I'm asking Mr. PHR to look into that, because they had agreed to move, and every time they found a location, Jim said no. So I'm asking you, because they can't redo their building, they want to do things, so we have to help them out. So I'm asking you to, to look into that. I'm also asking you to look into the reefs. Glenn Ritchie had a kitchen cabinet. Somebody came down for a presentation for reefs off of our shore. And what it would do is it would add 400 feet of permanent beach. It would add to fishing, it would add to surfing, it would add to the insurance abatement for the properties upland. But Jim would not work with the county. The county would provide those $5 million reefs for free. And to me, free is a good price. So if we can save $30 million, I'd save 30 million bucks. Secondly, I talked to county chair after the Echo. They had the Echo presentation, and I told them they failed to mention that they were going to use 4 million, and they had gained like 6 million. So they didn't even use all the money, because the commission was arguing about whether they were using the money properly or whatever. There is still like $14 million that was offered to the city, and Jim said no. So I asked him, I said, is it still on the table for a second pier? He said absolutely.
Who said that? Richard Wall said that?
Richard Wall. It's, we still, because they have all that money, they've got to spend it. And they don't get enough people asking to use that funds, the Echo funds. So they have 2 million left over this year, 3 million was left over the year before. It's building up. So they want projects. They were asking for projects. So I asked him, I said, what about the north boardwalk? Because the, what is it called, Hard Rock, and the Plaza were asking for a boardwalk to go north. He said he would absolutely support that. So I'm asking us to go through all the things that we can possibly get from Echo, and please ask. Thank you.
Of course, you'd like a second here, but I don't know if you said that Jim wouldn't work with them on a second pier. Did you say that?
No.
You didn't say that, did you?
No, he wouldn't work on the reefs. And he wouldn't work on, yeah, some other things.
Not with a second pier.
No, not with a second pier. No, no. But no, I did ask Jim about the pier when Kelly offered the $14 million, and Jim said no. That is true.
Our next speaker is
Anyway, you say a lot of things that are not right.
Our next speaker is Steve O'Neal, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Mayor, manager, commissioners, I'd like to give a firsthand perspective tonight on the construction project, the FDOT construction project on Oak Ridge Boulevard, and some recommendations for what we might do about that. Because over the course of the past week, I came to realize that almost nobody knows what's going on. A week ago, Tuesday, myself and everyone else in my building was awakened at 4:30 in the morning by some heavy construction equipment pounding on the road. There was no notification. We had no idea what was going on. We went outside, and there was all this construction equipment. And then at 7:30 that night, this giant road grinder shows up and starts grinding up the road right in front of my front door, and it is louder than a jet airplane taking off. You can't even imagine it. Now, this project started about a year ago, and construction has proceeded slowly over the past year. They go out there and they work on the road once or twice a week, and the rest of the time, there's nothing happening. There's just lane closures and barrels sitting around. So this was a great surprise when all of a sudden, we've got nighttime construction going on with heavy road grinding equipment and tremendous noise and vibration and shaking. And it has now gone on for almost the entire week. They did take two days off. They're completing that grinding, I'm told, tonight, as I'm speaking right now. And I spent this entire week, I contacted Commissioner May and tried to get some help, and I discovered that almost nobody at the city knows what's going on either. Apparently, FDOT is doing this all by themselves without notifying anybody, and I think there's a problem there.
That's not true. And actually, not saying you're not telling the truth, but I actually sat up here and told everyone about that project, and that has been announced. And we belong to one of the same clubs here, too. So I know the connections you have with some of the state officials, that you could be contacting them as well if you have a problem. But I can let you know that project is almost finished.
Yeah, I was told earlier today that they are completing the heavy construction tonight, and that the remaining work is primarily painting and is not yet scheduled. But they do not know whether that will be night construction or day construction. So it was, we were not given notice that night construction was going to happen. We were not given notice when the daytime construction started a year ago. And I spent the last week trying to climb my way up the ladder and figure out who could I talk to about getting the nighttime construction stopped and switched over to daytime.
Have you tried your state officials?
I found, I think, the correct official at FDOT eventually. And she put me, her job is outreach, and she put me in, gave me the name and phone number for the new project manager, because the project manager I had spoken to two years ago is no longer on the project.
It was advertised.
Two years ago, we got a notice saying that they were considering the project, but nobody ever told us it was approved and they were starting it and when or anything like that. We certainly didn't know anything about nighttime construction. So my, my suggestion is that the city get into some more transparent, bidirectional communication with FDOT, a more formal process.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Good evening. Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I just wanted to touch on a few things that came up through your discussion tonight. The first is the Bike Week master plan. I have never understood why the SAMA festival application is part of the Bike Week master plan. It's apples and oranges. It doesn't fit the same criteria. If you look at the way that they're prepared, the main street ones, everything's mapped and, and laid out exactly how the site's going to be. On the SAMA ones, you can't even tell what the property is. I don't know how the properties can be verified, because the names that are listed aren't actual, you know, some of the time aren't actual full names. So I don't know how we can tell whether those are legitimate property owners or not. I just think it's something that needs to be a separate and apart thing like every other festival, and that the Bike Week master plan be one thing, and the festival be another thing, and they fall under their very different requirements. Second, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that Ruth has had problems in the past or issues about plan developments. And I think I understand where those concerns come from. Plan development does give us flexibility, but it doesn't stay that you have to give a developer carte blanche to do whatever it is they want to do, when they want to do it. And that's the way that we've treated it a lot of times. We have allowed this long, long list of possible uses that tells the next-door neighbors anything about what might show up there. So I think we need to do a lot more critical thinking in terms of how we approve the plan developments. Ken mentioned having the developments mapped. Two things I would suggest is that the size of the development be reflected on the map, as opposed to just a dot in the middle of the location. And second, that the way that those are shaded in reflects the density of that development, because there are a lot of differences between a multifamily and single family, for instance, in the amount of car trips and so on. So I think you want a picture, not just of the placement, but of the kind of impact that those developments are going to have. I do think that it's a good time to reevaluate notification requirements. One thing that I would suggest is that we look at the roads where the concurrency study is happening, where the concurrency study is affected, and that we consider posting notices on those roadways, so that people that routinely use those roadways would understand that a development that would impact their travel is coming, and they might want to comment on that. And finally, John Nicholson talked about the Echo funds, city island recreation, great use for them.
Our final speaker tonight is Malcolm Williams.
Good evening, everybody. Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue, and Happy New Year. Just want to say I broke my vacation to be here with you guys today. Thank you for a great state of the city. With that, I just want to do an all-call with all the commissioners and you, Mr. Mayor, as well, because we do need your help. Certain things that we do need your help on is, I had another Saks meeting today with Palm Terrace Elementary, and one of the things that they're requesting, and if you guys have connection, is that they're looking for men. If you're retired, have some time, just come and volunteer one day out of the month within our schools. It's something that a lot of schools are looking for. There were some programs, I think it was in New Orleans, that a bunch of fathers went to the schools, and just being there, having that presence there, reduce their crime, and put some morale into the schools. And so that's something that we want to put back here in our city. I am volunteering. So I'm asking if you guys have any connection to any people that will enjoy doing that, one, and have the opportunity to do that, please join us as well. Another thing I would like to get you guys' help on is, the Neighborhood Watch of Zone 5 will be in the summertime. We'll be conducting what we're calling a community festival. And with that, we're going to do somewhat of a community field day. And so what I'm asking is that every commissioner create their own team of community people within your zone. If it's done
You shaking your head already, Ms. Paulary?
But it's just something that we want to get together. I'll be working on the projects for, just to get together, play football, tag football, whatever. It's still being worked out right now. But if you guys can help me in that and join me in that, or dedicate somebody as a team captain, that is something that, for our community engagement portion of our Neighborhood Watch, is something that we really want to do. Something else I want to bring to your attention, if it's a conversation or something that can be done, is to just remind you, the city of Daytona Beach is overlooked a lot of times, and we always ask ourselves why. And what I mean by that is, there are some certain events and certain things that travel. They go to Jacksonville, they go to Orlando, they go to Cocoa, they go to the south. Some of those, the Funk Fest. Another thing is, we used to have the 5K Color Run here in Daytona a couple of years ago. Huge success. Loved it. I don't run, but I like to have fun. I did it. And we haven't seen it since then. I only think we only did it one or two times. If we can get those events back here in the city, especially when we're talking about community engagement and community enrichment, I would love to see how, if possible, we can put Daytona back on the map. There's a traveling inflatable thing right now called the Big Inflatable Tour that's traveling. Again, Miramar, Cocoa, I believe Orlando, Jacksonville, those cities get these things all the time, and Daytona gets overlooked. So I don't know what direction or how we can get that, but if we can put that in front of you guys as a thought, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
We had anybody else? Commissioner Strickland?
State of the county, it's February 8th. You can make a reservation. They serve free food.
Means big job.
And if you don't want to make a reservation, you can watch it online.
All right, okay. Thank you all for a great meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
We did talk about the medicinal marijuana workshop that we're, yeah, but put it, put it in the, in the record, so the citizens can hear.
I was putting something on my, on the agenda, and I don't know the date. I didn't look at that. I can't just be making
It's the 27th. It's at Midtown. It's Florida A&amp;M. The youth school is coming down. They have a panel discussion on marijuana, medicinal marijuana for the community. Please come out and hear what they have to say.
Yes, I saw that. Okay, yes. Good night, Daytona Beach.